Good evening, everyone. I now call the October 2nd, 2019 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present, including the student representative, Joseph Bowers. Now, we turn our attention to the invocation. I would like to turn the mic over to Mr. Joseph Bowers.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Tonight, the invocation will be given by a 4th grade student at Andrews pre-K through 8, Mr. Jason, oh no, excuse me, James Samuels.[123.36][123.36](laughter) Mr. Samuels, whenever you're ready, please send a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for An awesome autumn day. The bustling wind, the crackling leaves, see them blowing from the trees, smell the crisp refreshing air. The wind is blowing everywhere. Those surrounded us so vivid and bright. What colors do you see in this beautiful sight? I see orange and purple, yellow and red, a big leaf just swished by my head. Author unknown.[198.01][198.01](applause)
That was a great poem, James. Thank you for doing that. I've got a couple of questions to ask you, get a little bit, get to know a little bit more about you. First of all, sorry for calling you Jason. Hopefully, you can follow in Mr. Samuels' footsteps one day. So, first question is, do you have a favorite subject currently?
Yes. It is social studies.
Social studies. It'd be my favorite, too. I've always loved social studies. Do you have any hobbies?
I like to sketch, but I like to sketch monsters. I like to read chapter books. I like watch, I like to watch people play games. I like to play Minecraft.
That's awesome. I like to play Minecraft, too, actually. So, I'd just like to know, is there anybody here with us today that you'd like to introduce?
Yes. My mom, Ms. Samuels, my sister, Alana Samuels, my principal, Mr. Barkley, my assistant principal through 3 through 5, Mr. Hicks, and Mr. Payne, Dr. Richardson, and Ms. Petway, and Ms. Irison.[312.12][312.12](applause)
Thank you so much, James. You all are free to leave whenever you feel fit. Thank you.
Oh, they can't leave you. Would you all, all of those that James was able to recognize, which was everybody, would you all please stand so we can all get a good look at you?[338.81][338.81](applause) Any comments by board members? Ms. Henry?
I think somebody needs to stand up, too.[348.81][348.81](laughter) Also, James, there's a sport that is a Virginia High School League activity that you may not know about because it has a weird name. It's called forensics, and you'd think that's CSI, but it isn't. It's public speaking. And one of the categories is poetry reading, and it's very important for the poem to sound like it flows and not, "I read a poem today, and this is how it goes," and you did that beautifully, so watch out for the forensics team when you get further along.
We'd just like to thank you again and thank the Samuels family for allowing you to be here. Thanks again, and good luck in school year.[398.81][398.81](applause) The next item of business is item 1.03, the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. As we move to the recognitions portion of our program, I'd like to call on Ms. Kelly Gore, our Executive Director for Public Relations and Marketing, and she will be assisted by Ms. Martha Mugler.
Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton Schools family. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing someone on our board, Mr. Joey Bowers, the alternate student representative. Joey, would you please join us?
Yes.
Want to stand right there? We've got some good things to say about you. All right. So, Joseph Joey Bowers, a senior at Thebus High School and Battalion Commanding Officer of the MCJROTC unit, earned the MCJROTC Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Achievement. Now, this is pretty special, as only four cadets in the entire world receive the award per year, and they must meet some pretty strict criteria. And this is what Mr. Bowers has done. He has had a class standing in the top 25% of his class. He has to have a school academic class standing in, oh, I'm sorry. He has a class standing in the top 25% of his class. He has demonstrated exemplary military leadership. He has demonstrated academic leadership in scholastic activities, student organizations, community activities, and interscholastic athletic participation. He must be enrolled in the MCJROTC for his senior year, and he must be nominated by a senior Marine instructor. So, obviously, you met all that criteria, as you are one of four in the entire world. And I'd like to share this before we all applaud him. Marine Corps Chief Warrant Officer Mann shared this about Joey. "In the past 27 years, I have interacted with thousands of cadets, and no other cadet has had a stoic, calm, and collected personality as Cadet Captain Bowers. He has the ability to rise to the occasion in many situations, such as being promoted to Battalion Commander a year earlier than he should have been. He has been very successful in the position and has achieved more than his predecessors. His achievement is never about himself, but about the cadets, the unit or the organization that he is loyal to. Senior cadets look up to him for guidance and an example to lead by. I am confident that Cadet Captain Bowers will achieve anything in life that he wants to and will find success at it." Let's give him a round of applause on that.[632.54][632.54](applause) A little bit more about, obviously, he has so much time on his hands, that he has served as the fire team leader, the squad leader, the adjunct chief, the honor guard commander, the company first sergeant, and battalion commanding officer, as well as participated on the drill team, the color guard, PT, and raiders. I'm going to let...
So, Joey, on behalf of our Chairwoman Cherry, our Vice Chair, Mr. Kilgore, our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, and the rest of my colleagues on the school board, we want to congratulate you very much for this high honor. And we have a certificate of achievement for you from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. It's presented to you, Joseph Joey Bowers. This is why we know you fondly. Thebus High School Legion of Valor Bronze Cross of Achievement. Are you wearing it?
I am not.
Okay. I wanted to show it, but you've got so much litter going on there already.[704.82][704.82](laughter) It's so impressive. And, you know, I did have the honor of attending a ceremony that was held in your honor last week, and we are just so proud of you and your accomplishments, and just so incredibly proud of where we know you're going to go with your future. So, on behalf of all of us here, congratulations so very much. I'm going to get a hug, because everybody loves a...[733.12][733.12](applause) And I know that he has some very proud parents in the audience. If you all would stand and be recognized.[757.82][757.82](applause) And our team in our midst is here also, Carolyn Bowers.[767.12][767.12](applause) Congratulations again. Oh, he's got, oh, hi. Wow, you've got a fan club here. So, anyone else here in...
Administrators.
Mr. Harris from Thebus? Oh, okay, we've got a Thebus team.
Ask him to stand.
Please stand and let us recognize you.[790.12][790.12](applause)
And thank you, Ms. Mugler. I'm going to actually step down to the podium for the second presentation, if that's okay.
That's fine. While we all reflect on the fact that there are only four people in the world that receive this, and one is from Hampton City Schools.[813.12][813.12](applause)
So, for the second part of our recognitions this evening, we have some special news to share. The Virginia Department of Education, or as we know as VDOE, released school accreditation ratings on Monday, September 30th, and what a story Hampton has to tell. For the first time in the history of Hampton City Schools, 100% of our schools are accredited And everyone in our division and community is certainly Hampton proud, as VDO indicates that our students in Hampton City Schools have hit the mark in academic achievement measured by the state's accountability system. And we certainly have been on a journey to earn this achievement. In 2015, 12 schools, or 41% of our schools, earned full accreditation. In 2016, 16 schools, or 55%, earned full accreditation. In 2017, 19 schools, or 66% of our schools, earned full accreditation. Last year, for 2018, the division showed considerable improvement, but fell short with 27 of our 29 schools, or 93%, earning accreditation without conditions. Monday's release by VDOE confirms that all 29 of our schools are accredited without conditions, representing 100% of the division's schools.[928.04][928.04](applause) So, you may ask, how did we get here? So, at the beginning of the 15-16 school year, the school division implemented an intense accreditation plan of action, which includes a system of differentiated support to schools based on the assessment data. HCS also added a literacy program that focuses on literacy development from birth to post-secondary. Additionally, the division has worked to enhance the curriculum and better align the assessment program with the curriculum, rewriting 183 curricula. Professional development has been directly aligned with a laser focus on the curriculum and the delivery of the curriculum. We developed an internal data system to track student performance, attendance, discipline, and a variety of measures in real time. We have also focused on on-time graduation rates and student attendance. In addition, there has been a strategic focus on our school, climate, and culture. However, we recognize the importance of a systems approach to ensure equity across all schools and have spent the past four years focused on that system's approach. In addition to our intense plan of action, our community has been an integral part of our progress. Hampton City Schools certainly lives out its mission statement. In collaboration with our community, Hampton City Schools ensures academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.[1023.43][1023.43](laughter) And the success of our students is due in part to our strong community partnerships. These partnerships validate our belief that our young people can and they do succeed. Our community is certainly Hampton proud and has been celebrating the success of our students and teachers in many unique ways throughout the city of Hampton this week. With Monday's release, our community proudly displayed yard signs throughout the city touting the division's accreditation. Hampton's Coliseum, City Hall, the Hampton Convention Center, and we also saw the Virginia Air and Space Center lighting up each night in blue and white for the next two weeks. The city has placed accreditation status, our accreditation status, on electronic billboards along Interstate 64 and 664. And yes, I really wanted to see 64, so I purposely got stuck in that traffic before the HRBT this morning and said, "I've got another 20 minutes till I get to work, but I'm sitting here by this billboard, and it looks so good." The city's Department of Parks and Rec is also running the accreditation message on their electronic marquees, and banners have been placed at Darling Stadium, City Hall, and the Rupert Sergeant Building, as well as Old Point National Bank. An air banner even flew above the city of Hampton on Monday afternoon, compliments of Gray Garrett with Garrett Realty Partners, Boo Williams, NFL Hall of Famer Dwight Stevenson, and Mario Stillett with the Stillett Law Firm. So, and thanks to the generous support of ABM, American Facility Services, as also known as AFS, Warwick Mechanical Group, Siemens, Delta Graphic, Patrick's Glass, Patrick's Hardware and Paint, Alternative Roofing Solutions, Goodman Glass, Keymore Supply, Inc., The Tile Shop, State Electric Supply Company, and Centennial Contractors Enterprises, every Hampton City Schools employee received a "We Are HCS," Hampton City Schools 100% accredited T-shirt, which was worn division-wide yesterday. And all of our students were celebrated with a healthy treat. And in addition, I know, how could there be more, all employees of our 32 schools and sites enjoyed cookies, compliments of Chick-fil-A on Mercury Boulevard in Hampton. So, to close out our presentation tonight, we're going to share with you some of the social media presence we have had around accreditation since last week. Thirty-four, what we call teaser videos, were pushed out on social media last Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday morning, leading up to Monday's accreditation release. We spotlighted our students, our teachers, our administrators, support staff, our Madam Chair, the mayor and city manager, as well as community members and other special guests, as they built excitement around the good news that we were about to share. So, here are just a few examples of those 32.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Williams.
I'm Sybil Gordon.
I'm Molly Gilbert.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ross.
I'm Ally Batista.
I'm Lisa Shannon.
And we are Cary Elementary. Did you know HCS has great news to share?
Hi, I'm Jalen Whitfield, and I'm so proud to attend Bethel High School. You'll find out why very soon.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Ferguson, and I am glad to say that I am a student of Thebus High School, the home of the Phantoms, where our purpose is greatness, every day, every way. You'll find out why very soon.
Hi, I'm Riley Foxworth, HCS Rocks. You'll find out why very soon.
Hello, I'm Joanne Hayesberg, the Chancellor and Provost at Hampton University. Hampton City Schools has good news to share, and I am proud to be a part of it.
Hello, Pamela Northam, First Lady of Virginia, and I'm proud to be here today to say that Hampton City Schools has some great news to share, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Hey, guys, I'm Francina McCoy, two-time Olympic gold medalist, also a graduate of Bethel High School, and Hampton City Schools has such great news to share, and I'm so proud to be a part of it.
So, those teasers, there were 32 total. They ran Thursday, yes, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday morning, and we had some great comments as far as, "What is the news? When are you going to tell us the news?" So, on Monday, after VDOE released the state ratings, we shared our good news with a special video.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Smith, Superintendent of Hampton City Schools. I'm so proud and honored to announce that for the first time in Hampton City Schools' history that all of our schools are 100% accredited. This has certainly been a journey of hard work and dedication. Five years ago, only 12 of our 29 schools, just 41%, were fully accredited. Earning 100% accreditation is due to the hard work of our students, our teachers, and all of our HCS staff. And as we recognize that we could not and that we did not achieve this academic success on our own, it's so important for me that we recognize the fact that we are building from places of strength in our great city. And because of the support of our school board, our city, our families, and all of our community partners, we did it. Thank you for your dedication to our young people. We all have a part in their futures and a reason to celebrate.[1410.83][1410.83](applause)
With the announcement, I believe this morning, we were about 21,000 or 22,000 views, and it hit over 50,000 people and had close to 800 shares. So, people are out there telling our good news. The next few slides are just a glimpse, a small glimpse, of the posts that the division has pushed out, as well as our community and the schools, and I'm sure that you will see from just these few examples of how Hampton proud everyone has been.
Hi, I'm Mayor Donnie Talk. On behalf of the members of the city council, our city staff, and the residents of the great city of Hampton, we want the Hampton City Schools to know that we are so proud of the great news about your accreditation success.
We also pushed out pictures of how we were supported. Here are several pictures of City Hall, the Hampton Coliseum, the Convention Center, and the Virginia Air and Space Centers. They were lit up in blue starting Monday night. Here's a photo of one of the electronic billboards that I was sitting by this morning on I-64.[1501.72][1501.72](laughter) And this was absolutely made possible through the city of Hampton, and they look fantastic. Just to show some of our community support, if you have been around town, you should have seen pretty much signs everywhere, from small businesses and larger businesses and just community members in general. Here is First Team Hampton Chevrolet, and they are sharing our good news. Here is a post that we snagged from Open Door Baptist Church, again, being part of our community and helping to make this accomplishment a reality. Here's a post that we shared from Emmanuel Episcopal Church for sharing the 100% accreditation celebration. Oops, let's go back. This post is actually from one of our senior directors, and it was just great because Eric Stone posted, "You just can't keep fantastic news a secret for long. Congratulations Hampton City Schools teachers, students, staff, and families for your hard work and instructional focus. Together, everyone achieves more. We did it. We are HCS." And these are pictures that he saw, or pictures he took pretty much after the announcement was made. These popped up immediately. As I mentioned earlier, thanks to several, four, community leaders, and we were able to have an air banner. And those are just pictures of it flying around Hampton. It flew around for about two and a half hours, and I will admit, we were like little kids over at SAC as well, because when it came flying by, we all rushed to the hallway to peer out the windows, and we're squealing and clapping and so forth. And then we did another one. This is from one of our employees who said, "Well, on my way to class, and look what I see." She must have been stuck in traffic, too. She was being safe.[1621.38][1621.38](laughter) Showing just some of our school posts. This is out of Machen Elementary from yesterday, when all of our staff members were wearing the "We Are HCS" T-shirts, and they also gave a shout-out to Chick-fil-A for the sweet treat for their staff. Lindsay Middle School showing off their shirts. We did take a picture, a big group picture, of the school administration center. We were missing a few and had a few extras, but we were celebrating the success of 100% accreditation, because we are just so proud for our school division and the community. This post is from Burbank Elementary School, and it says, "Even the cafeteria staff has enjoyed in on the fun. Kids received a special treat to honor their hard work and make 100% accreditation happen." And it was great seeing the photos of all the students from the schools. This post is out of Phoenix pre-K through 8 school. Again, showing their students over there. Here we have Booker Elementary School. From Bethel, Mr. Seals.[1693.12][1693.12](laughter) "We Are HCS Bethel students are the best in the world. And then just, it was so, gosh, just gave you chills, or just tugged at your heart, the different posts that people made about Hampton City Schools and the city of Hampton. And just to show you a few, we have one of our assistant principals that said, "What an honor to be a part of something special. Hampton City Schools is 100% fully accredited. Wow." One of our high school teachers said, "One of my favorite parts about working for Hampton City Schools is that 100% isn't the end of the road. Teachers and leaders here are always discussing what's next in innovative teaching and learning. I'm thrilled for our accomplishment today, but I'm even more excited for our tomorrow." Here is another one of our teachers. "I wish I recorded my students' cheers and excitement, but I'm not going to lie, I teared up at their reaction and my pride in our district. Nobody I'd rather hit this milestone with." And then another one of our employees. "These two, my third graduated from HCS in 2017, are my Y. They are why I love working for HCS. Thank you to all teachers, staff, and admin who work so hard to give 110% every day to And because of this great team, we can say we are 100% accredited without conditions."[1784.12][1784.12](applause) And just in case somebody missed what the T-shirts look like and our banners, I'm going to ask the school board to come out front in front of the dais and show off their shirt and their banner. and show off their shirt and their banners.
Right before we do that, if it's okay with you, Ms. Gore, the mayor, Donnie Tuck, had called me earlier today. And he still can't contain his excitement. And he wanted to make sure that he came and spoke to us tonight. So let's welcome Mayor Tuck.
Thank you. Good evening. Madam Chair Stevens, members of the school board, Dr. Smith. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I need to apologize. I didn't get the memo about what to wear. And second, if I realized I was going to be a part of the video, I might not have come. But at the same time, I could not not come, pardon the double negative, and just congratulate you, commend you, celebrate this accomplishment. Because I can remember that during the 2016 School Board and City Council campaign, the subject of our schools and its accreditation, the fact that only 12 out of 29 was a subject of that election. But also remember telling individuals that we have a superintendent who is known for turning around school divisions. And I was optimistic, and I believe that others in our city were optimistic. And so to Dr. Smith, and to your leadership team, to your administrators and staff, to all the principals, and to their leadership teams, and particularly to our students, we could not be more proud of this accomplishment. Because even though Hampton wins a lot of state championships, and we have cause to celebrate, generally those celebrations are confined to the school that participates and its supporters. But here's something that is citywide, that we all can wrap our arms around and feel great about, because we understand the journey, and we appreciate the journey, and we know that it's not over. But we have hit an important milestone in this. And so we want to thank you. You've been great partners. And as a city council, we've been just elated to have a partnership with the school board, trying to meet more regularly, trying to find out from you, what are the things that you need to help our students be successful. And some people may think it's a slogan, every child, every day, whatever it takes. But I do know for a fact that we don't have a choice of picking what students, who come through those doors, that we're going to educate, or to even put, to decide and say, well, we'll give this child this, that, or whatever. You do, and I've been in your schools. And I know the effort that's put forth on a daily basis to try and provide for every child that comes through those doors. So I'm particularly proud. God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for those heartfelt comments. We really do, as a board, appreciate it, and as a division, appreciate it as well.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Tuck. If the board would please come forward. Like to get a photo. Ms. Ann Bane's--
Mayor Tuck's got us emotional now.
Now they're all crying instead of smiling. All right, ready? On the count of three. One, two, three. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. We're going to grab the mayor and take a quick photo.
Let me just say to everybody that Ms. Gore let us know that she alerted security ahead of time. And we have had these poppers sitting up here for about, I guess, 30 minutes. And Ms. Mugler kept saying, "Every 10 minutes, kind of pop it now." So she was very excited that this is a chance we got to do this. But as you can see from the video presentation that was done, and from the heartfelt comments, again, from our mayor, a lot of work went into this community, doing what it felt it needed to do to celebrate a milestone. So we are indebted to this community for the love and support it has given us. I don't know of a stronger community than in Hampton, Virginia. And we are proud to all be a part. But I do want to say, I think we need to share some kudos in terms of how this was all celebrated. Kelly Gore, you did a fantastic job coordinating. Ms. Mugler and I both know, when it comes to marketing, that's no easy task. And you had to put a big piece together. We know you had help. We know Ann Bane is always a cheerleader for this division and always has the right connections that we need, as well as our staff with Channel 46, our graphics department, and many, many more. So we want to thank this administration, Ms. Bowers, everybody. We want to thank you all for doing a fantastic job. Thanks again. Any comments from board members? Yes, Ms. Henry?
Well, I just want to second your remarks with regard to Ms. Gore and her invitation to our community to help us celebrate. It's just another example. We found out many, many years ago as teachers that if you ask someone in this community for help with something for a school, they always say yes. Always say yes. It's pretty amazing. And to have so many people come and want to help celebrate so much hard work on the part of teachers. I just have to say, don't give us stuff like this again. We can't be trusted. It reminded me of the candidate for board who wanted to arm teachers. And obviously, we don't want to arm board members. But it's, the wonderful thing about our staff is the comment that the teacher made that said, "We're not just about getting 100% rating. We're about getting better and better and doing more and more for our students." And that's what teachers in this division have been doing since the monster, in a way, of SOL testing reared its ugly little head. And we all want to say ugly things about SOLs because it's hurt us. It's hurt our soul. It's beaten us over the head. But it's done a wonderful thing. And the wonderful thing is it's provided a fantastic, uniform curriculum experience for all our students. And that's really important, because you don't want to say, well, you know, people look at school districts and they say, oh, well, you know, this school over here, this is where they do this wonderful stuff for kids, and they have these wonderful results. Guess what? We do that same wonderful stuff for all the kids, and we get the wonderful results everywhere. And that's because teachers have been working so hard to meet an ever-raising bar on these requirements for academic excellence. The state, we came very, very close 10 years ago with this. And the state changed all the rules, changed all the tests. And our teachers didn't roll over and play dead. They found another way to teach their children more efficiently, working themselves twice as hard, to get it done so that the kids would meet a higher standard. And now, nobody can say, oh, well, you have to go to this school because that's where they get those results. They get those results everywhere, and that's what's so exciting and we're so proud of.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. And to piggyback off that remark very quickly, I was talking to a friend of mine who is not a native of this country. And she was excited for accreditation because she had seen so much coverage on it. But she said, "Ms. Ann, what does that really mean?" So I thought the best way to explain it to her, Dr. Smith, was, okay, let's put it this way. Every one of our schools got As. And then she said, "I get that." So we're still very excited that so many people want to participate in that excitement as well. Any other comments from board members? Yes?
Real quickly, I just want to say, you know, we have a lot of great teachers, a lot of great administrators, and they have worked so hard. But I would also just like to give a big shout out to the students of Hampton City Schools for all the effort that they have put towards this.
Very good point, Mr. Bowers. And we are proud of each and every one of them because each and every one of them showed we can do it. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Kilgore?
Just real quick, I think the superintendent will confirm this, but when you're comparing apples to apples, and you define urban school divisions in the state of Virginia, we are the only urban school division that got 100% accreditation.
Absolutely. You are correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. You are 100% right. We had an opportunity to, some of us, to attend the Council of Urban Boards of Education. And we leaked it. We leaked that we were 100%. We leaked it. I'm going to tell you that right now. And when we did it, I can tell you so many other boards, urban boards, am I not right, Mr. Samuels? Said, "How did you do that?" Seriously.
Seriously?
Yes. Any other, yes, Ms. Mugler?
Yes, that's how we did that.
That's right.
And his leadership team. That is how we did that. In 2008, I joined the school board. And in my very first meeting, we were told by our superintendent that we were going to be 100% accredited. And then the embargoed results came out, and we were 97% accredited. And it has been an uphill battle ever since, as Mrs. Henry described. Over this last decade, testing has evolved and morphed and changed and revised. And finally, you know, it's become about student progress. And it's so exciting to see for our children and for our administrators and our hard-working teachers, and especially for our children, that I believe they feel a tremendous sense of pride in their school division. And it is just, if I could still do a cartwheel, I would do one right now, but I have a skirt on. But it is just one of the most exciting times in my life for this to have occurred in this school division. And Mayor Tuck, thank you so much for your heartfelt words to us, made us all get a little verklempt, and I am easily brought to that edge. So thank you so much for your remarks. And it isn't without notice that our city council got behind this school division and did, rolled up its sleeves just as high as our sleeves were to get alongside this board and this school division to make sure that we were doing everything we could for our young people in Hampton. And so I'm just so excited. I was in a neighboring school division yesterday morning when, of course, we were on the front page of the paper, and they had happy dollars at their meeting. And they had all gone through their happy dollars. Well, I had brought with me my newspaper. And I put my happy dollar in, and I had to say, this is the kind of news everybody wants to see on the front page of a newspaper about a school division. And so I'm so excited for this school division. And I'm so proud of our superintendent and his leadership team and the children in Hampton. This is just the highest moment for a school board member ever. So kudos to everyone, and continue celebrating with us. But as we know, 100% accreditation means that we can't rest on our laurels, and we need to keep up our strong work and work on behalf of young people every day.
Good job, Ms. Mugler. Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm so elated to have the opportunity to share in this experience. On yesterday, during my monthly one-to-one meeting with the superintendent, he and I just looked at each other in excitement. And then it as if we were turning the chapter. So what's next? Where do we go from here? And as Ms. Mugler stated, we cannot rest on our laurels. Where does Hampton City School go next? And I firmly believe that we have the leadership in Dr. Smith, with the team that he has surrounded himself with, that we will continue to be 100% fully accredited, and then move on to the next big thing in Hampton. And as we know, the school division is the economic engine that drives a community. And with the support of Mayor Tuck, the support of city council, and the support of our community, we're not only going to shoot for the moon, but we're going to reach the stars, Dr. Smith. And thank you so much for your commitment and dedication to Hampton City Schools.
Thank you, team.
Any other comments from board members? Yes, Dr. Mason?
I was talking with Mark Crump at State Farm Insurance today. And one of the things we talked about was the fact that the community has gotten involved. And they don't realize sometimes what something as small as a school supply drive can do for the morale of our kids and our school system. If a kid doesn't have to worry about having a pencil or a notebook, or going without those types of things, and they can focus on the learning and the instruction that's being given, it makes a huge difference in what we're able to do. So definitely a big kudos to our community. You know, Mark wanted to, you know, he congratulated us, but I also congratulated him. Because he did that, you know, he's been doing the stuff-the-bus back-to-school school drive for Hampton City Schools. And so I wanted to make sure, you know, people like Mark Crump that's out there providing those types of resources for our kids every day, it makes a big difference. And so to our community partners, we say thank you.
Right. Anybody else? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to say anything, but it looks like all of the board members have had something to say, so I better say something.
Well, you've been saying something for the last couple of days about it. So we know you've been excited.
But we are, if I can use the phrase, blessed to be here in the Hampton City School system with such hard-working staff, teachers, and students. The only thing that I would say is that we want to celebrate the moment. We can worry about, you know, tomorrow, tomorrow. But today, we can celebrate because we've done a lot of hard work. And so I say kudos and congratulations to everyone who's been involved with getting us to the 100% accreditation. I'll say this, the hard work now starts from today because we've got to maintain the 100%. Because we would hate, Ms. Mugler said in 2008, when she came on the board, that it was 97%, and then it fell to 41%. I would hate for us to be at 100% and then fall back to 41% all over again. That would be a disaster. And just as persons are talking about the great job we've done to get to 100%, they would also be talking about how we allowed ourselves to plunge back into a devastating 41%. So I would say to keep up the good works, and may God continue to bless each and every one of us.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. You know, I can't do any crystal balls or anything, but I think I can say with assurance that if we go from 100% to 41%, Dr. Woodhouse, then I would say Dr. Smith has been abducted by aliens. Something drastic would have to happen. And I get what you're saying. So we do have to keep going forward, as Mr. Bane said, on the video today. So we do have to keep going forward, as Mr. Bane said, on the, um, the video today. I'm just so proud of, um, Dr. Smith and this team, as are all board members here. But I just want to point out that the first thing Dr. Smith said to, um, our reporter, Mike Hoasclaw, he was talking about this continuous improvement piece. And he mentioned that, that we've got something in place to just keep moving forward. And, um, I have 100% assurance that we're gonna be there, Dr. Smith, with, with you at the helm. But I'm gonna tell you, like I told the reporter, I'm celebrating now like we won the Super Bowl. So I'm just gonna keep celebrating, Dr. Woodhouse. I think we celebrate the moment, right? Exactly. Okay, thanks again, everybody, and thanks to the community. And thank you again, Mayor Tuck. We appreciate it. Moving on with the agenda. Now we're at the consent agenda, which is item three. And that consists of item 3.01 Personnel Report, number 19-19, 3.02 Receipt of Donation, 3.03 Minutes of the School Board Retreat of August 30th, 2019, 3.04 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 4, 2019, 3.05 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 18, 2019, and 3.06 Certification of the Closed Session of September 4, 2019. I'm gonna ask for a motion, but I do note that 3.02 is a little different. So do I hear a motion from a board member?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we, um, adopt the consent agenda as presented as a block.
Second.
Okay, this has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we adopt tonight's consent agenda as a block. Is there any discussion? Here and now, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. And before we move to item number four, I just want to, for the sake of transparency, let the community know that the item receipt of donation is just that our board requires, we're required to act on requests of offers of gifts to the divisional schools with a fair market value of over $500. And we've got the schools that have received those gifts thus far, Hampton High, Bethel High, Kickatan High, and Phoenix Pre-K through eight. So that's what we were voting on in that. Now, moving to item four, uh, turn it over to Dr. Jeffrey Smith for superintendent and staff reports.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, at this time, I would ask, uh, that, uh, Dr. Cagiano would come forward, our deputy superintendent for curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And he will introduce this particular presentation, One Division, One Transformation. Um, and we're really gonna focus on the math plan for Hampton City Schools. And you will see that we are on that journey of continuous improvement. Uh, certainly when you hear these individuals present and talk about the plan that we have as it relates to math in our school division. So, Dr. Cagiano, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board. Joining us this evening for our presentation, and is Ms. Angela Birdwright will be leading it off in reference to some of the current initiatives underway in the mathematics department. And as Ms. Birdwright makes her way to the podium, did wanna share, I don't know if you know this news or not, but, uh, Ms. Birdwright, uh, she's not leaving us, but Ms. Birdwright, uh, Ms. Birdwright, this is her second year in the leadership position, mathematics curriculum leader for Hampton City Schools. And she has had a great mentor, big shoes to fill when Ms. Carolyn Holmes retired over, a little over a year ago. And for those who don't know, Ms. Holmes is directly responsible for Ms. Birdwright standing where she is today in many aspects. Uh, she was her high school mathematics teacher at Hampton High School. And so, uh, continues to be a mentor in her life. And she has done an outstanding job of filling Mrs. Holmes' shoes in, uh, in the new leadership position. So this evening, I'll go ahead and turn the podium over to Ms. Birdwright.
Building a mathematical community, right?
Oh, yes, most definitely. And good evening to everyone, to our Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, to our, um, school board, and to our superintendent, Dr. Smith. So glad to stand before you. And when Mayor Tuck was, was speaking, I almost got a little choked up too because I'm a product of Hampton City Schools as well. And it means the world to me to be able to stand before you today because I'm a product of Robert E. Lee Elementary School. My third grade teacher, Dr. Owens, is sitting right there. Yes, she was. Uh, so who's excited about? I went to Lindsay Middle School, which I was proud to be the principal of for several years, and then graduated from Hampton High School, home of those crabbers. So crabber pride, class of 99, all right? And so, it's really great to stand before you today because it's an honor to serve the community and the kids. Um, this, it's, it's just a wonderful thing. But I'm gonna move on because I don't wanna get choked up up here. But I wanna tell you, we're so excited to share with you about One Division, One Transformation and building a mathematical community. So we're gonna go on a journey together. I first want to introduce our math team, um, Leslie Strong Williams. She's our elementary math teacher specialist. She's going to stand, they're going, they're not gonna be shy today. Math teacher, there you go. Michelle Vinnie, you can see her, here she comes. She's our secondary math teacher specialist. Ashley O'Malley, mathematics coach. Pam Nazareth, our mathematics coach. Carol Queen, she could not be with us tonight, but she is our Title I mathematics middle school coach. Rebecca LaComte, our curriculum integration technology teacher, as well as April Rollins, our administrative support specialist. And then our math instructional leader, some of them are here tonight, so we want you to stand too. Come on, team. All right, support specialists and our interventionists. These are the folks that make it happen. I can't tell you, we cannot do our job without them. Now, you notice you've got a swag bag in front of you. There you go, you can wear it with your t-shirt. Look at that, it's red, white, and blue. Go ahead and open it up. So, wanted to talk to you about that. The core, alignment, results, and excellence. You'll notice on the front of your bag, the R is capitalized. And in our department, we don't believe that R is just a verb, it's just something that we do. And I want to just draw your attention here, that we are team squared. We're together, everyone achieves more. Again, that key word is together. By teaching, using, engaging activities in mathematics, we exemplify this through our daily alignment, results, and excellence. Our team vision, mission, and values, we believe that all of our students, we're preparing them to be college, career, and life ready. We hear that frequently from our superintendent. But also, I want to draw your attention to the word "all." Not some, not these, not those. All students will be successful in mathematics. Our team values, we have three pillars in our department. And we talk about differentiated instruction because, you know, kids come to school to do worksheets and they can sit and everyone learns the same way. Right? Absolutely not. So we believe in differentiated instruction, building conceptual understanding, and problem solving as a process. Those are our three pillars in our department. And one thing that we really build upon would be our word and our walk have to match. We're out in our buildings, we're out with our teachers and students. You can't get the job done sitting in your office. We do not believe in that. We are out in schools, as my heels will show, they were a little worn down. All right, so we know that all of our students can learn mathematics and deserve the opportunity to do so. Our team charge here, and we've got a high one to fill. I just heard Dr. Woodhouse say it, we are not planning to rest on our laurels either. We, I told Dr. Smith when we got, before the meeting today, I said, we are in an uncomfortable place. We are not going to be comfortable. We plan on being uncomfortable and working very hard to continue to maintain our, all of our schools being fully accredited in mathematics with what, folks? Without conditions.
That's right.
There it is.
Say it like a man.
I heard a amen back there in the corner. That's right. All right, now, see what you started, Dr. Woodhouse, you did it. All right, so our mathematics student performance data, that's what we're gonna talk about first. Our systems approach, Dr. Smith frequently talks about a systems approach. And we have adopted that in our team, using data to drive curriculum instruction and assessment, a guaranteed and a viable curriculum, also with our Desmos curriculum integration. And we'll talk briefly about our professional development offerings that we have with our team. So let's, I know, Madam Chair, you said we're gonna just continue to celebrate. Well, let's do it. Let's do it right now. All right, so our standards of accreditation, our academic achievement, here with our last, um, test, um, iteration here, all of our schools are Level 1 in mathematics and have exceeded. I remember when the team, we were looking at data coming in, all of our schools exceeded the accreditation benchmark. Exceeded, not just met it. And when we were testing, I know we recall that when the scores were coming in with our, um, teachers and staff, we were super excited that we didn't need to count on expedited retake. We didn't have to count on, no. We did not have to count on...
Say, say that once again, we didn't have to count on...
Dr. Smith said I can repeat it, so I'm gonna repeat it. Thank you, Dr. Smith. No expedited retake required. We did not need to use any, what we call new math with any three-year average. Our teachers and our students and our staff made it straight out the gate. And we're so excited about that. It is like the Super Bowl.
That's right.
All right, so our standards of accreditation for our achievement gaps here, you noticed there, for our achievement gaps, 21 of our schools are Level 1. And at Level 2, we have eight, but notice the trajectory, we're continual, continuous improvement. And that's where we're headed. Let's compare to the state and where we were from last year. If you notice there in the two blue columns, you're going to notice in all of our students' performance groups, when we're comparing the 2017-18 school year with Hampton City Schools, to now, all of our students' performance groups had gains and growth, in many cases, by double digit. If you also notice with four of our subgroups here, our student performance group with Black economically disadvantaged English learners and our Hispanic population, we also surpassed the state performance as well by double-digit gains. That's exciting, too. So now let's get into the math. And Madam Chair, I remember us having a story about mathematics and statistics. No, we're not going to have you do a normal distribution curve tonight, I promise. But what we did as a team, we believe in a systems approach. And where does it start? With our analysis of our student detail by question reports or our data. We have to continue to drill down. We disaggregated our SOL data by test form and test type to understand what our, our standards would, or what was being tested on our SOLs. We then developed protocol documents and then provided staff training for all of our mathematics teachers, elementary, middle, and high, on what each of our tests would encounter by cognitive level. Because you can teach, right? You can teach, and it may be saying, understanding, but really, we need to be analyzing. So it's very important. I'll show you a screenshot of what that protocol sheet looked like. We did this for each and every one of our SOLs. And so you'll notice here for Algebra 1, for example, notice in the pink highlight, students had to perform multiplication and subtraction on polynomials. Well, that means that they're having to show their work. That's probably something that was a TEI item. So we have to make sure that we make our adjustments to our curriculum as well as to our assessments. Very important to be strategic, but also laser focused on what our test will have on them so that we can drill down with our teachers as well as adjust our curriculum, our instructional delivery, and our assessments accordingly. So our system approach has a couple of items in it. The first thing we do as a math team, we engage in strategic planning leadership retreats. Uh, we met, I love the poppers, we used those too. We had a fun time with that. Poppers are addictive, aren't they? And so we had our poppers, we were celebrating as well, but we had our strategic planning retreats. And during that time, uh, myself, Ms. Strong Williams, and Ms. Vinnie, we met first at the division level because we needed to identify what our K-12 priorities were. And that, again, encounters going back to that student performance data to be able to drill down to know specifically how we needed to make adjustments to our guaranteed and viable curriculum. We then moved forward with meeting with our instructional leaders, with our coaches, and with all of our interventionists and support specialists because they needed to know the vision from the mathematics department, where we were heading because they worked so well together with us as a team. They are an invaluable part of our team and the arms and legs of the team as they're out in buildings and schools. So we're speaking the same thing, we're speaking the same language as we're looking to improve and enhance teaching and learning here in Hampton City Schools. We then develop individualized school data files. In those files, we disaggregate the data we provide to each of our schools. Their student detail reports by questions, we provide to them their preliminary SOA, um, data. As well as looking with our, our response to intervention, um, database, we then tier each and every student in Hampton City Schools by our RTI parameters so that our schools and our principals and assistant principals know specifically how many students we need to work with, where we need to continue to provide, um, improvement, remediation, and any other forms of intervention. Uh, we do that for every single school. Now, we also then engage in principal chats and agendas. And what we do, we meet with every single school, with all of our principals and instructional leaders, every single school. We usually have about an hour to an hour and a half that we meet as a team. We go out, um, to talk with our principals and assistant principals about their goals for the year and how we can best support them. And then from there, we develop a schematic that we use to help guide our work and our walk throughout the course of the year. And with that being said, as a, and Sherry Drake was with me, thank you, Sherry Drake. We, we, by September 26, I do believe, at nine o'clock, we finished that force. That was our last one. And we had a lot of steps on our, on our, on our phones too, Dr. Smith. We did. And so, but we really believe that's important. Why? Because we need to be in full collaboration with the leaders of each of our buildings. And we need to let them know that we are a partner with them. Also, we develop coach action plans. I can't say enough about our coaches, they are phenomenal. Um, they, we have worked to develop coach action plans at the secondary level where we provide strategic support to our new teachers. We want to retain and sustain our new teachers here in Hampton City Schools. And so our, our coaches work specifically with our new teachers. Our new teachers do content, whether they've moved, say, from seventh grade to eighth grade so they're learning some new content. We also provide embedded PD, um, or professional development, monthly, to each of our content focus groups or collaborative leadership teams so that we're working, um, in collaboration with each of our content areas to ensure that they are aligned to the curriculum framework and also utilizing our resources that are in our CIA headquarters. Um, we also then provide quarterly data meetings to each of our school buildings where we meet with each of our teachers after every, um, critical skills assessment. Because, again, going back to that drill down method, we break down the assessment, question by question, percent by percent, so that student, teachers will know specifically, how well did my students do on item 11? And what was that standard or what's, what was that question tagged to? So we can continue to do spiral review and go back and be able to assist with our students. We go back to a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and what does that look like here in our school division? Well, I provided you here with, um, an example. What we provide in our curriculum are very strategic learning intentions based upon the standards in our curriculum framework. We provide checks for understanding for our teachers as well as ways to assess for mastery. And what does that look like? We provide that, um, pictorial representation as well as sample lesson plans for our teachers to implement in the class. We've also provided a number sense routine library for our elementary, um, grades. And you'll notice that there are strategic bands, K-1, 2, 3, and 4, 5. We are really paramount about our vertical articulation and ensuring that students can see the connections in mathematics. We've also developed, and Leslie Strong Williams really was the spearhead for this in working with our department with our manipulatives guide. We've provided this to build that conceptual understanding with our students and our teachers. And so you'll see here, we have multiple representations. And you all have a copy of the presentation, you can click on that link there at the top. And you'll be able to see different ways. So for example, if I'm a grade two and three teacher and I want to learn different ways that I can model how to demonstrate fluency and numeracy, then I can go to that particular slide. And there are going to be videos of students doing the work, our teacher leaders and representatives in our school division showing how to actually engage, um, and use those manipulatives. We've also worked, um, to create a Desmos demo catalog. And really, again, I tell my team all the time, if you're doing it by yourself, you're doing it wrong. And so they know this, and so working together as a team. So Rebecca LaComte really is a spearhead for this, yes. With our Desmos demo catalog. Our Desmos, uh, Desmos has two houses. One is on activities and polygraphs, the second deals with, um, the Desmos calculator. We have created, um, a resource guide for our elementary, um, school for grades four and five for our floor function calculator, and then for the scientific and graphing calculator resource guide. And we developed this in-house, this was not provided by the state. And so from there, we've also created the Desmos demo catalog. I'm going to show you a picture of what that would look like. There it is. Okay, so what we have done is taken each of our standards vertically, and then we provide our teachers with the actual activity link, what the description is of the activity, and then where can they find it in the unit? So teachers aren't hunting and trying to gather and find it, it's right there for them, right there in the curriculum. We also have it broken down by unit. So if I teach Course 1, I know that a Desmos activity is in Unit 4. is in Unit 4 through Unit 10. And then if I look at my particular grade level, if I'm teaching Grade 8 math, then you can see the standard, the activity, the description, and again, the unit. Now, come on. Thank you. And so we have a partnership with the Virginia Department of Education. You can see that red line there on that second sentence. You'll notice that the Department of Education also has a Desmos activity log, and I wonder where they got that from? Hampton City Schools! So our work here in Hampton is now being used statewide.
That's right.
Amazing. We've provided you just with some features of the calculators, or again, our four functions for our 4th and 5th grade students, scientific calculator for our middle school students, and then our graphing calculator for our Algebra 1, Geometry and Algebra 2 students. We have professional development opportunities, and again, our professional development opportunities are strategically aligned back to that student's performance or student data by question reports, because we really want to provide professional development that our teachers can use, and that is meaningful, purposeful, and intentional. And so you'll also notice, and you'll see it closer with you there at your seat, and that deals with our joint collaboration with our special education department. We are doing a collaborative with them as we're continuing to refine our work and approach with our students with disabilities. We started this work last year at the secondary level, we saw great improvements with our students with disabilities, and we're going to continue to do that work, and now we're bringing that professional development to our elementary schools as well. Lastly, James Cash Penny, we know him as J.C. Penny, he said, "Growth is never mere chance, it is the result of forces working together." And we truly do believe that when we work together, every child, every day, and doing whatever it takes, we will continue to grow and maintain that 100% accreditation without conditions. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak before you.
Great job.
See, they'll get me choked up up here. Thank you, Manteen. Any questions from the board?
Fantastic, fantastic job. Any comments or questions from board members?
Everybody.
Yes, Ms. Henry.
I just, you know, I thought math, math teachers are supposed to be the quiet nerdy ones. Isn't this fun? It's, enthusiasm is contagious, and I know that, that you're, you know, there are lots of elementary teachers who start out being just a little bit math-phobic, and they think, "I'm not sure I can do this." And, and I know having a coach with all the energy that you're providing and the resources you're providing, that's gone, you know, that's gotta be gone by now, you know, we know how to do this stuff. And, and I appreciate that kind of energy, it's, it is, enthusiasm is catching, and math is so cool, because, you know?
Yes, it is.
You know, that's the best grades in school, because the teacher can't say, "I didn't like the way you did that," so you don't get full credit. Yeah, I got the answer, baby, here it is. And I, and I can tell you all the steps, too, and that's the really wonderful thing, is that you're working on the children understanding why they're doing it, and not just because I said so.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's wonderful that you're having all this success and no conditions, that's the way to go, keep fighting the good fight. I think it's wonderful, it's just, it's, it's really exciting, and excitement should go around on mathematics, that's wonderful.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Henry.
Any other comments from board members? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Yeah, I was really, wow, that was a low-energy presentation. I met you a long time ago, before I was ever on this school board, we were, we used to work out in the same gym together.
Yes.
And I had no idea I was so much older than you are. But I could keep up with you now, couldn't I?
You sure could. Body pump, yes.
That's right, body pump, which I haven't been able to do for a few months, but I'm gonna get back at it. But I am really impressed with your results. Your presentation was, was outstanding. As Dr. Smith knows, I like a lively presentation, and you certainly brought it today, and Carolyn Holmes did have some tough shoes to fill, but I think you have filled them quite well. And it is great to see.
And it's, and I think it's a testament to your, your staff standing up for you as you presented to us tonight, but obviously, and, you know, it, when people like to work for you, that, that goes 100 miles. So that's really impressive, but just looking at these scores across the board and the level of improvement that we've made in one year in mathematics is, is really terrific to see. We, we have some more strides to go, but I am really proud of the work that you and your team have done on behalf of our children, and particularly in the area of math, as we know that is a stumbling block for so many young children. And so terrific work, great to see it. I'm, I'm happy to hear your references to the additional work you're gonna do with students with disabilities, as that's an area we, we continue to need to improve on. And I know that there's, there's great improvement here, 10, 10, more than 10 points in, in each category there, so great to see that, or 9 points. So thank you so much for your presentation, thank you for making sure we didn't doze off here.
Thank you.
But really great presentation, and you keep up this good work, and I know we'll, we'll see more, more strides next year.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Again, thank you for a rousing presentation, it was just, you, you kept us on our toes, and we really are really excited about the work that's being done, because this speaks to what you said, your work should be your word and your word should be your work, and this absolutely speaks to that. I can tell you, Dr. Smith, had I had this exciting math team around when I was in college, I may not have ducked statistics for three and a half years. But you, you're making such a difference in our students' lives, and thanks to all of you for being such a great team, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, thank you, School Board.
Remarkable, thank you. An outstanding team and presentation, thank you so much. Madam Chair, we will move to the next report, Business and Operations, our financial report. I know Ms. Dorch will come with that same enthusiasm and excitement. That's a CPA, right?
High expectations.
Thank you all so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, School Board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure to present both the July 2019 and the August 2019 board reports. As of the end of July, our revenues totaled $7.8 million and represented a 5.9% increase over the prior year. Looking at August of 2019, revenues increased to 16.5% and were 4.9% higher than August of 2018. Much of this difference between the prior year is related to additional state funds for our compensation supplement, and then additionally, we have our pharmacy revenue and print shop revenue included within our revenue totals. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $25 million and $39 million for July and August, respectively, and some increases there are due to us paying our city debt payment earlier this year than we did in the previous year. You'll also notice within your report that we have included additional information on our fiscal year 19 carryforward encumbrances and showing the impact to our fiscal year 20 budget. And lastly, included in the report is a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for both months. That concludes my report.
Ms. Dorch, what did you say the August revenue was?
August revenue was 16.5 million.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Dorch.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, and members of the board, that concludes Superintendent and Staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. The next item of business is Item 5, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the Superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the Board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for research and response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The School Board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our speaker is Stacy Shorter. Good evening.
Madam Chair, Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Smith, thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. I am here on behalf of the Hampton NAACP to congratulate you on receiving the 100% accreditation for every single school in the city of Hampton. I also am here to invite you, on behalf of the committee, to attend our next scheduled meeting, which is Monday, this coming Monday, at 7:00 PM at Bethel AME. Superintendent Dr. Smith has already graciously agreed to attend and to give an update on Hampton City Schools, and we wanted to extend that invitation to the rest of the board as well. And on a personal note, I also wanted to share that I have a 2nd grader and I have a preschooler in Hampton, and it does take a village, and I wanted to say thank you for your hard work and for being a part of my village, and I am grateful for you all. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, have you received any additional?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item of business, we have Number 6, deliberation, which consists of Item 6.01, appointment of George Victor Hellman to the Hampton Education Retirement Systems Board, known as HERS. Any questions? Comments? Okay, we'll move forward, and that will be moved to action for the next meeting. Item Number 7, items for action. They consist of 7.01, revision of school board policies, KBA, requests and responses to inquiries under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and KBA-F1, request for public records. 7.02, revision of school board policy JO, student records. 7.03, revision of school board policy JK, advertising in the schools. 7.04, revision of school board policy DL, payroll procedures and payday schedules. And 7.05, revision of school board policy EFB, free and reduced price food services. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve action Items 7.01 through 7.05 as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler, that we approve Items 7.01 through Item 7.05 as a block. Then it's discussion from board members. Here in numbers, Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Next item is Item 8, deliberation first read. They consist of Items 8.01, revision of school board policy AC, non-discrimination; 8.02, review of school board policy BBBB, school board member oath of office; 8.03, revision of school board policy BBBC, student representative to the board; 8.04, revision of school board policy BCG, school board attorney; 8.05, revision of school board policy CBA, qualifications and duties of the Superintendent; 8.06, review of school board policy GCBH, early close, early release; 8.07, review of school board policy GEC, working conditions; 8.08, review of school board policy GCDGB, family medical leave; 8.09, revision of school board policy GDF, personnel records; and 8.10, revision of school board policy GCBDB, staff attendance. The first five are those of Ms. Reeves, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Reeves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Sections A, B, and C are board policies, so the first review was of non-discrimination policy, AC, and following some VSBA recommendations, we are changing some language and adding characteristics that are protected by federal law. BBBB is your school board member oath of office, this is a five-year review, there are no recommended revisions. School board policy BBBC, student representative of the school board, there are some minor language changes that are suggested, and I understand that between now and perhaps deliberation, we may make a few more additions to the policy to include perhaps some, some additional language, so that will be in there at your next meeting.
Okay.
School board attorney, again, VSBA is, is taking all of the, the future tense and putting it all into, into present tense, and so we're trying to do that as we get to each one of the policies, one by one, because you have almost 400, so that's really all that's changed on that one. And CBA, the qualifications and duties of the Superintendent, again, those same grammar changes, and then we added two references to the Virginia Code.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Are there any qualified questions, clarifying questions by board members on any of these? Okay. Moving forward, Ms. Ruth, you have the following five.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to begin with policy GCBH, which is the early close, early release policy. This policy is up for its five-year review, and there are no recommended changes. Our next policy is GEC, working conditions. Again, this is a five-year review with no recommended changes. Our next policy is GCDGB, otherwise known as family medical, family medical leave, and this particular policy, Ms. Reeves had referenced several times, that VSBA is updating language in their policies to make sure that everything is present tense. If you happen to read through this policy, you will notice that we have left all of the, the shaws and all of the future tense statements in here. This particular policy is straight from federal law. There was quite a discussion with the Policy Review Committee about whether or not we should update the language. Ms. Reeves and I reviewed federal law, again, and made the decision that we were going to leave it as-is, rather than update it to, so it won't match any of the rest of the policies in terms of tenses.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yes. Our next policy is Personnel Records, policy GDF, and then this particular policy, you will see the, the update to present tense, and so those are the, just some minor policy language updates, and otherwise, this is a five-year review with no substantial changes. The last policy that I want to bring to your attention tonight is policy GCDB, staff attendance, and we have made some updates to this particular policy. We had had some requests from administrators to update our language around chronic abstinence. We had had some requests from administrators to update our language around chronic absenteeism and excessive absenteeism. This particular policy, we spent, oh, the better part of last year reviewing with administrators, with teachers, with the division leadership team, with the Policy Review Committee. They have all reviewed and had input on the changes that we have made to this particular policy. So on page 1, you'll see that we have added language to specifically state that the attendance policy does not apply to employees who are currently under family medical leave, who need a reasonable accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act, or who are covered by U.S.A.R.O., which covers our, our veterans and our active-duty reservists who, who have been deployed, so, and/or their spouses. So those groups, while we have always followed that, we felt it was important to include that language within the policy. If you then go to page, we, well, on page 2, we have completely eliminated the current information around corrective action, and we have replaced it with the information on page 3, where we have very specifically outlined what the consequences are when folks fail to attend work. And I think those are the, the major changes. We've also removed the chronic absence tardiness because it's covered in that paragraph at the top of the page.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
You're welcome.
Any clarifying questions for Ms. Ruth? Thank you again. Moving on to Item 9, Information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, October 16, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building. Is there any information to come from the Superintendent?
Madam Chair, just one item. I would like to acknowledge that Ms. Gwendolyn Lee, who served as our Langley Liaison, I think has been promoted, and we now have someone else who will be serving the school division in that capacity. And Ms. Lee, will you come forward and introduce Ms. Tammy Edwards to the board?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Smith, audience. It is my distinct pleasure to have served this phenomenal school district for 15 years. Congratulations on your 100% accreditation, on Dr. Smith being Superintendent of the Year, and everything else that we have collectively done for our families that you serve at Langley Air Force Base. And I really want to say a big gigantic thank you to my wingman, Ms. Ann Bain. I could not have had any success in this position had it not been for her. Our names became synonymous with our leadership, our families, and the 11,000 that rolled through Langley Air Force Base within the years to come. So I thank her so very much. But I am truly pleased to be able to introduce to you, Ms. Tammy Edwards. I have no doubt that the legacy will move forward with Ms. Tammy Edwards at the helm. Tammy?
Good evening.
Evening.
Wow, I am so overwhelmed. I'm so proud of you all, and congratulations, all of your hard work. I've actually been following you on social media and everything, and I finally have administrative rights to the school liaison Facebook page, so y'all are pasted all over there. You just paste it. And I, I, I've only been in this job, I'm just starting my third week, but I've already been talking to parents, and there was a gentleman who kind of had hesitation about his child going to, to a school in the district, and I told him, I said, "But they're 100% accredited. That means that everything is awesome. You are in great hands." He said, "Okay, then." So I look forward to sharing this journey with you. And I just want to say about Gwen, there is no way that I could fill those amazing fashionable shoes, okay, that she has tried over this 15-year period. A matter of fact, I was thinking about it last night, and I said, "You know, if anything, those shoes need to be bronzed," because she has created an amazing legacy, and I just hope to build upon the legacy that has already come before us, and I am honored to serve with you. Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard, and Ms. Lee, I can tell you, you have developed a legacy with Hampton Schools. I think we started working together when I was PR Director.
Yes, ma'am.
And you've been amazing, and Ms. Bain has, has been in lockstep with you and all the wonderful things we're doing for the military, and so we are very excited to say congratulations to your leaving, but welcome to your new partner in crime, okay? We look forward to a continued relationship. We do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No further business from the Superintendent.
Okay. Any further business from board members? No words of wisdom? Mr. Bowers? None?
Can I speak?
Yes. Yes.
Well, as Mr. Harris always says, "Good, better, best. Never let it rest until your good is your better, and your better is your best."
Woo-hoo. With that said, I think we'll jurn.